Down here in the basement.
All right. Calling to order. This is the Dania Beach City Commission Virtual Regular Meeting is Monday, September fourteenth, twenty twenty at seven fourteen. Can you please call the roll?
Mayor Llewellyn.
Here.
Vice Mayor Odenman.
Here.
Commissioner Brandimart.
Here.
Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Commissioner James.
Here.
City Manager Garcia.
Here.
Attorney Ansborough.
Here.
Please join me in doing the Pledge of Allegiance. And regions.
By. The United States of America.
To the Republic.
The Republic.
Which stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
Have a moment of silence. Thank you. Presentations and special event approvals. Special event request from Saint Ruth Missionary Baptist Church to host a drive-in service to celebrate the pastor's anniversary to be held on September twentieth, twenty twenty, and parking lot at one forty-five North West Fifth Avenue from ten AM to twelve PM. I actually got an email about this. They wanted to change the address. Eleanor? For. City Manager.
Yes, we've had the department's director take a look at this request and we have no problems with it.
Was the address able to be changed? Because I know I got an email saying that they needed to change the location.
From last communication that I received, they had changed the address, but I'll circle back and make sure that the address is aligned with the support.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Commissioner Harris is raising his hand, but I can't hear you.
Yes, second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is proclamations. I have one tonight, and that is for Hispanic Heritage Month. Proclamation from the Office of the Mayor, City of Dania Beach, Florida. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month begins midway in September and ends midway in October. Its roots go back to September nineteen sixty-eight, when Congress authorized President Lyndon B. Johnson to proclaim national Hispanic heritage to recognize the rich culture and contributions of Americans who trace their roots to Spain, Mexico, Central America, South America, and Spanish-speaking nations of the Caribbean. It was expanded by President Reagan in nineteen eighty-eight to cover a thirty-day period. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month always starts on September fifteenth, an historically significant day that marked the anniversary of independence of five Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. The designated period is also a nod to those from Mexico and Chile, which celebrate their independence on September sixteenth and September eighteenth respectively. Also Columbus Day or Dia de la Raza, which is October twelfth falls within this thirty-day period. Whereas according to the U.S. Census Bureau, the Hispanic population of the United States as of July one, two thousand nine, I'm sorry, two thousand nineteen, was sixty point six million, making Hispanic, making people of Hispanic origin the nation's largest ethnic or racial minority. Hispanic constitute eighteen point five percent of the nation's total population. Dates of the population of one million or more Hispanic residents in two thousand nineteen were Arizona, California, Colorado, Florida, Georgia, Illinois, New Jersey, New Mexico, New York, North Carolina, Pennsylvania, and Texas. And whereas in Dania Beach, the U.S. Census Bureau lists its two thousand ten population as being twenty-nine thousand six hundred thirty-nine, and provides a figure estimating the population at thirty-two thousand two hundred seventy-one by two thousand nineteen, with our Hispanic or Latino population percent at thirty-two percent. And whereas Hispanics have had a profound, significant, and positive influence on our country through their strong commitment to family, faith, hard work, and service, that have enhanced and shaped our national character with centuries-old traditions that reflect the multi-ethnic and multicultural customs of their community. Now therefore, on behalf of the Dania Beach City Commission, I'm Lauren Llewellyn, Mayor of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim September fifteen, twenty twenty, to October fifteen, twenty twenty, a Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Dania Beach, and encourage all citizens of Dania Beach to join in learning about and celebrating the vast contributions Hispanics have made to the world, to our country, and to our community. Next, we have citizen comments, and I believe we have two. The first one was Donna Pepplin. She's here. I don't see her on here. The other was Louis Romoli.
I don't see Donna on, but I see Louis there.
I do see Louis, I don't see Donna. Louis?
There he is. Louis, we can't hear you yet.
I don't think he's, yeah. Can't hear you, still muted.
He is unmuted.
It might be your computer.
Because it shows him as unmuted.
I know. Louis, try again. I'll have to reconnect.
Mayor. If it's on to address item nine point five, do you want him to just wait until that?
I was going to suggest that since we're having an issue. Louis, if you can hear me, see if you can maybe join back on, let me shut down and come back on, and then we'll call you at nine point six. Okay, I don't have any other hands up, and I didn't have any other papers that were submitted. Tom, is that correct? Tom Schneider? There's only the two?
Only the two, Mayor.
Okay. All right, so public safety reports? Chief Marks?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners.
Evening.
I'm trying to get a hold of it. All right, there we go. In response to the recent traffic complaints we received, I requested the assistance of our Regional Highway Unit. They spent a total of forty-five hours in our city along the federal highway corridor, addressing traffic violations. During that time period, they issued thirty-four moving citations and eighteen non-moving citations. We also had several complaints in reference to large gatherings. To continue with proactive measures, we formulated a directed patrol in an effort to stop them from occurring. We ran the directed patrol for two weekends in a row, and that resulted in several citations being issued. We'll continue to remain vigilant in our city to identify potential problems before they grow into a disturbance or illegal gathering. On September ninth, at approximately five twenty-five AM, we responded to an armed robbery inside the Chevron gas station located at three forty-five North Federal Highway. A suspect entered the gas station, brandished a firearm, and demanded cash from the employee. At some point, a fight between the gas station employee and the suspect ensued. During the struggle, the suspect fired two rounds at the employee. Upon the deputies arriving, the suspect fled out the back door and was quickly apprehended. The suspect was charged with attempted murder and armed robbery. Commissioner Harris started this one either one or two years ago with us and Walmart participating in a DEA National Drug and Takeback Day. We've scheduled one to take place on Saturday, October twenty-fourth, from ten AM to two PM at the Walmart four oh one East Sheridan. Residents can bring their unused unwanted medications to be safely discarded. Please no needles. Our neighborhood support detectives continue to deliver food boxes to any families in need. If anyone is unable to obtain food and they need it, they can reach out to us, and as long as we have the food available, and even if we don't, we'll make sure we get something delivered to them. Due to the COVID, we're not, we're not able to really get out and get involved with the schools, the parks, stuff like that. So we came up with a good idea to do virtual safety classes via Ring or Zoom. So if anybody knows a daycare, or preschool, or a school within the city that would like a virtual safety class, we can do that. I know fire, our fire rescue is capable of doing that as well. And just before the meeting, I received a call from Jesse Marks, the Executive Director for the Miami Dolphins Foundation, and he offered us fifty to seventy-five spaces for our Dania Beach families and youth to come down to Hard Rock Stadium this Saturday. And they're doing a food giveaway. They're giving out meals for the families, and the children are going to receive a voucher for shoes from Payless. It's a partnership that Payless started with the Miami Dolphins Foundation. So Eric Brown from Parks and Rec and our Crime Prevention Unit is going to get together and jump on that and get the families ready tomorrow. That completes my report.
Thank you, Captain. Chief. Anybody have questions? Thank you very much. This Chief Pelisser here.
I'm here. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, and our fine citizens in Dania Beach. We continue to monitor our fire stations for our personal safety. We've been vigilant with our nursing homes and group homes. We've been pretty good about having a hurricane outlook and joined a weekly conference with the National Weather Service. Our upgrade is complete, and all the software will be installed within the next two weeks for all our brand-new radios. Station repairs at Station One, we upgraded our oxygen room, and you will be seeing our members going out and checking on hydrants. We're not going to be flowing them, we're just going to be stopping by every hydrant, making sure that the caps are, come on and off easy in case we ever have a fire, and we'll also be making sure that there's markers out in the streets so we can locate them in the middle of the night. Other than that, I have nothing else, and if you have any questions, I'm here.
I don't see any questions. Thank you very much, Chief. Okay, consent agenda, do we have any polls?
Seven six I need to read.
So. Any others? Do we have a motion? I'm sorry.
A motion to, oh, you have to read it first.
City Clerk, please stand up. Tom?
Mayor, I apologize, I have no issue, I just am raising my hand to alert Frank to unmute me so I'm more timely with calling the roll and stuff.
Okay, so you are unmuted, so we have a motion, do we have a second? Commissioner Harris, unmute yourself.
Second.
Okay.
I'm muted now.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, go ahead, Tom.
Item seven six, an ordinance of the City of Dania Beach. Florida amending the Code of Orders relating to the General Employees Retirement Plan and Trust, amending Chapter eighteen, Article three, Section eighteen, dash twenty-nine point fourteen, Internal Revenue Code compliance, providing for compliance with the Federal Secure Act, providing for conflicts, for the providing for an effective date, first reading of this ordinance, sponsored actually through the pension plan.
Not a public hearing, right? So, does anybody have any questions or concerns? Do we have a motion?
Move the item.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No bids and requests or proposals, public hearings.
Okay. With the first several items related to the budget, I have what we call an ad laura text script, and I will read that this is announcements for tonight's budget hearing for the City of Dania Beach, Florida, for fiscal year twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one. The proposed operating mileage rate will be five point nine nine eight mils, which reflects no change from the city's current fiscal year military. This operating mileage rate represents a two point oh two percent increase over the rollback rate of five point eight eight oh eight mils, as computed in accordance with the provisions of Section two hundred point oh six five one Florida statutes. The voter-approved debt mileage service mileage rate is zero point one six two oh mils in accordance with provisions of law pursuant to Chapter two hundred Florida statutes. The city's aggregate mileage rate is six point one six one eight mils, five point nine nine eight mils for operating, and zero point one six two oh mils for debt service. The final hearing for the budget and envelope, ex-millage, will be held virtually through the use of the virtual meeting technology, reachable through the HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash DaniaBeachFL dot com forward slash sixty-three, forward slash agendas, dash minutes, on Thursday, September twenty-four, twenty twenty at seven PM. First resolution is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, as required by the City Charter and Section two hundred point five Florida statutes, approving the proposed mileage rate necessary to be levied for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one for operating purposes, establishing the debt mileage approved by the electorate, running for a public hearing, when and where objections may be heard, questions answered, writing for conflicts for the providing for an effective date, the finance department.
Public hearing, is there anyone here to speak for or against? Move the item.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Brandimart.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner James.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Odenman.
Yeah.
Mayor Llewellyn.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Nine two, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, relating to the imposition of fire rescue assessments and provision of fire protection services, facilities, and programs in the city of Dania Beach, Florida, re-imposing fire rescue assessments with updated assessment rates against this property located within the city of Dania Beach for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty. Approving the rates of assessment, approving the final assessment rule, confirming itself in preliminary rate resolution, writing for effective adoption of the resolution, writing for severability, and writing for an effective date.
Public hearing, is there anyone here to speak for or against? Anyone? Move the item.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Brandimart.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner James.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Odenman.
Yeah.
Llewellyn.
Yeah.
Motion carries five zero.
Nine three, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, relating to the provision of stormwater in the city of Dania Beach, Florida, imposing, re-imposing stormwater assessments against property located within the city of Dania Beach for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty, approving the rate of assessment, approving the assessment rule for any conflicts, where the providing for an effective date.
Public hearing, is there anyone here to speak for or against? The other one, move the item.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Brandimart.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner James.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Odenman.
Yeah.
Mayor Llewellyn.
Yeah.
Motion carries five zero.
Nine four, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, relating to the provision of solid waste service assessments in the city of Dania Beach, Florida, re-imposing solid waste service assessments against assessed property located within the boundaries of the city of Dania Beach for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty, approving the rate of assessment, approving the assessment rule for any conflicts, where the providing for an effective date.
Public hearing, is there anyone here to speak for or against? Move the item.
Second.
A second.
Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Brandimart.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner James.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Odenman.
Yeah.
Mayor Llewellyn.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Nine five, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, as required by the City Charter and Section two hundred, part oh six five Florida statutes, approving a tentative annual budget for the city for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, running for a public hearing, where objections will be heard, and questions concerning the budget will be answered, writing for conflicts, where the providing for an effective date.
This is a public hearing, and I know that Louis Romoli wanted to speak, and I believe he's back. So.
Is there any, is there any update on that situation so he can come back?
He is back.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead, Louis. Can't see you, can't hear you. Are you there? Maybe you can call in on your phone.
Was that Corinne?
That is Corinne, yes. There he is, calling in. All right, Louis, we can.
Let me, okay, good, so I'm unmuted. Thanks. Okay, so I want to address, I'm not going to repeat what I said, but this is regarding the petition from what I spoke to earlier in the CRA board meeting. I want to clarify that Commissioner James stated that there was a lot of misinformation. I want to assure Commissioner James and the entire commission that there was no misinformation about where those two hundred and fifty thousand dollars were coming from. Those monies were not in the CRA as of right now, you're voting on that tonight. Those were city-funded monies, and that's what we are discussing, not to move those monies to the CRA. Once you move them into the CRA, there's really not, you're right, Commissioner James, we can't, you can't allocate them for the entire city, and that's the whole point. We don't want the two fifty going just to CRA's use. So that's the whole point of this, of the petition. And you have a copy of the petition, you can read it, and you can see it very clearly that we stated what our intentions were. I also know, it's nice to know that Commissioner Brandon Marty does not care about the hundred and ninety people that actually signed this petition. We only had a couple of days to do this, and it was pouring rain, and this was all done online, and it was also done under COVID conditions. So per thousand residents that signed her petition how many years ago? That's great job, Chicky Brandon Marty, but you had thirty days or more to do that, and you were not under a COVID nineteen restriction. I want to let you know that under the current conditions, if we had thirty days to do petitions right now, we'd have well over two thousand, so I think we got you by half thousand, thousand there. But I think it's very unprofessional of you, the way you talk to the residents of Dania Beach, and how you address our concerns about spending two hundred and fifty thousand of my tax dollars and their tax dollars for your benefit, only for thirty percent of the city of Dania Beach. And again, I think you owe us all an apology, and you also owe us an explanation as to why you think our hundred and ninety petitions don't matter at all. That's all.
Anybody else here to speak for or against? Commissioner James, are you raising your hand?
Yes. Yes, I'm not going to do the entire speech that I did at the CRA meeting, but I am going to address the one resident that came out to speak against this. I'm going to start out by saying the monies, any monies that we as a CRA board or a commission allocate, our monies that are, to the CRA, are monies that can only be used in the CRA. I do want to remind everyone that the CRA was created in two thousand and two under the commission of the late Charles Massey, Pat Florrie, Bob Mikes, John Perdino, and I think Robert Chun. I did remind everyone what the CRA was, and I know there are a lot of residents that are watching, and so I want to be very clear and detailed on, you know, and thorough on what I'm saying. The CRA is an independent, is a dependent district, established by a municipality or a county government for the purpose of carrying out development activities that include reducing or eliminating blighted conditions, improving the economic health, safety, and welfare of the community, and also to encourage public and private investment to the designated area. There is a process to where and how a CRA is established. That was established by those individuals in two thousand and two because they saw the need. They understood that this was a vulnerable part of our city. They are the visionaries for the CRA. There are cities that would love to have a CRA. There are cities in every city, you know, they do receive an allocation from a tax increment from the city as well as the county. Certain CRAs that were established, I think, beyond a certain date, were no longer funded by the county, but still had funding from their city, and that's where we see this. And I do know that to address, I know that Commissioner Harris said that this is about the history of the CRA. But for me, it's both about the history of CRA because we keep landing here, and it's also about COVID. So the resident who signs a petition that doesn't want those monies to be allocated to a certain area, I want to ensure you that our CRA makes up multiple neighborhoods, including Brighton Road, City Center, East Federal Highway, Dania Beach Heights, College Gardens, and Northwestburg Point. And it also makes up a diverse, you know, demographic with forty-six percent blacks, thirty-six percent whites, fifteen percent Hispanics, and five percent others. I am a solution-based person, I do understand that everyone is hurting due to COVID, so I have crafted a solution and a program that, you know, I heard from a lot of the residents who had the complaints via Facebook, I engaged with them on social media, and they're okay with having a mirrored program, they're okay with having a program that, you know, we can have both in the city and the CRA. I am all in favor. Mayor Llewellyn mentioned at the last meeting that if this was the past, if this were the past, that she would like to, you know, add certain stipulations and for us to meet, to have, you know, strict guidelines and to make sure no one is getting over on us. This is for non-HUD individuals, so this, I don't think that this also would go towards individuals who are already on that type of assistance. But we can make whatever rules we want to make, we are the drivers of that. And I would encourage us to sit down and put together, you know, our vision of what we wanted and how we wanted to carry that out. All of our, all of our neighbors have, a lot of our neighbors have CRA, obviously, Hollywood, Davie, Hollenda, for a lot of us who has multiple. And I think that, and all of their monies, again, come from it. So to strictly address Louis, since he addressed me, you know, I just want to ensure you that when I was speaking about the funding, I was speaking about the funding coming from something that we already funded, we already approved. These are not additional dollars on top of what we had already approved. These are the dollars that we have already approved to be reallocated. I understand that you are against saying that, is your right, but I just want to really inform all of the residents, there wasn't even a want from certain members that were on this commission to have any rental assistance because they were only banking on the county. So at the first CRA special meeting, we, our mayor and Commissioner Harris, didn't want any rental assistance, they wanted to wait and wait and wait, the county did, they didn't, they didn't support any, any allocations of any money at all to either the city Y or the CRA. There has not been a mirror program, I have addressed time and time again. If there is a program in the CRA, which we all serve on, that we also think would benefit the entire city, that I would support that wholeheartedly, I've always said that publicly, you can go and pull up those minutes. You could also go and pull up the minutes and see what commissioners and, you know, our commission and board members have brought. It hasn't been much to mirror any of the programs that we are saying that we want, you know, the equity for. There hasn't been one program that was brought to the city that addressed COVID response relief or anything. There hasn't been one program that was brought to the city that, you know, when we say, why are these monies only being spent here? Okay, well, mirror a program, or bring a program that will address the needs for the rest of our residents. I haven't voted against any such program because no such program has ever been brought forward. I'm bringing for an option for us to be able to. I'm bringing for an option for us to be able to mirror the program, you know, that we are going to outline in detail on how the monies can be spent so that we can both have this program in the city and this program in the CRA. I know that people think when you rent or you're in an apartment, your voice doesn't matter because you might not pay property taxes, but I do want to remind you that rental monies are spent, and those taxes are also counted as revenues for our city. So I just want to remind everyone of that as well. And I have identified, and I know I, we heard from Frank at the CRA meeting, I want to ensure none of these monies are coming from any of the departments, any of the projects that have to do with infrastructure, any of the very important things that our city staff team has sat down and put together and that I'm very proud of. This money isn't coming from that. The money that I'm asking to be reduced will come from a PAL program that, you know, I am very passionate about our sports and our cities, and this is something that I actually, you know, advocated for. So 30,000 would come from that. Seeing as the next, the development that we were discussing or the portion of the place that we were discussing the habit, that development isn't going to be built in 12 months. So I think we have time to figure that out. The Vintage Motorcycle Show, I don't even know if that we were permitting large-scale events. We're not even back in City Hall. We are still at our homes. So to think about permitting an event that has that amount of people, I think that's something that we could pull off the table for now. The Holiday Lights, I want everyone to realize that that was a thousand percent increase to $8,500 that we spent last year, and now it's budgeted for $100,000. So I, you know, I would like to reduce that $25,000. Again, you know, we put on the back burner for an entire year our commission admin coordinator. I would like that position to also start mid-year, seeing as though, again, we aren't even in City Hall. So the price for that was $90,000, but that was for the entire year. So if they start mid-year, I think I would cut, that would probably cut in half roughly. And then the remaining balance of that, I'm asking to come from our commission contingency, which currently will have $150,000 in that. And I think that we could definitely do something that addresses the division of the state that we're in right now. Even on this board, we're divided, and I'm not a person that is for this type of division. I am a solution-based person. I have listened, and I understand that there's misinformation or a lack of understanding about CRAs, and I get it. I didn't understand before I went and really learned and went to the courses and learned why CRAs are here and why we are funding certain things. And so it is my ask to amend the budget to include a city, a city portion of residential assistance that will mirror what we have for our CRA program so that no one feels like only the CRA is going to receive relief during COVID. I know that our vice mayor has recently, you know, kind of discussed, what are we doing? What are we doing? We're not doing anything. And, you know, there's going to come a time where we're going to look back and, and we're going to say, what did we do during the times to be able to, you know, get us to this point? I know there were also discussions about the 500 or 500 here and 500 there. I'm going to clarify that. Frank, in no way, shape, or form did our finance director tell me, look, we have identified $670,000 that you can go take and do what you want to do. That's, I never had that discussion with Frank, and I want to make sure to clear that up because I don't want anyone to think that that's what he told me. I did go because I wanted to identify savings because I wanted to discuss with my colleagues programs that we can do, meaningful programs that we can stand and back. And we came up with a lot of different programs, five different ones, one from each individual, that, again, is going to serve the city, regardless of whatever part of it is going to serve it, and those are all programs that I stand behind. So after the further discussion, my motion to amend the budget is on the table. Thank you.
Does anybody else, okay, Vice Mayor, you have something to add?
Yeah. You know, I'm just, I'm listening to our discussion, and I'm hearing everyone basically say the same thing. They don't want division, they're not about division, I'm not here for division. I'm here to, you know, to bring unity to the Sydney, to the city and all of that. So I would entertain the idea that perhaps we are all looking at different solutions to the same problem, and that maybe we have just dug our heels into the ground a little bit on this one. So I think we've been offered a really good solution here that would address what has been brought up by the residents, that they want us to prioritize money for the city and not just for the CRA. Let's put aside, because it's more of a philosophical argument at this point, you know, should the money just go to the CRA or just go to, or should go to citywide? At this point, at where you are in your education about the CRA may play a part in that, in your deep understanding or lack thereof of the CRA, its purpose, its goals, and what it does. So maybe shelve that part of the argument a little bit and focus on the part that we're all looking to solve the same problem, which is that, yes, we're, I think we're, we've all said, we recognize that the CRA area has a vulnerable population, and then as my colleagues have also pointed out, of course, we have the elderly population, we have just residents throughout the city that have lost their jobs, have lost their positions in industry, and are facing, you know, foreclosures and afflictions and things like that, and not being able to pay their bills. So that this problem does exist, citywide, I think we all agree on that. It occurs in the CRA, it occurs in the city. I think we also have the foresight to know that this is not going to be something just for right now. This is going to be a problem that continues throughout the year. So I like this solution. I don't think we need to mirror every program of the CRA, but in this instance, this seems appropriate, and it does seem like there is a path to get there so that we can provide both the CRA residents, the city, the residents, the residents, the rest of the city, everyone can get the assistance that they need. So I don't want to get lost in the forest here over this detail of what I don't think is important. I think the important part is that we get to the place where we can help all the residents. So I am supportive of this motion. Thank you.
Frank, can I call on you a moment? Oh, actually, Commissioner Brandon Marty has something to say, so let's hear from her first, and then I will call on Frank.
I also agree with the way that it was explained to help everybody now.
Okay, Frank?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. So in order to do a mirrored program, we would have to cut other items out of the budget that the board previously agreed we wanted to put into the budget, correct?
Yes.
Is that even something that's feasible right now? I just want to know because I know that, I know how long that all of you worked together trying to reduce things and tightening belts and that sort of thing, and I have concerns that this is at the 11th hour, that it's being asked that we take out $250,000 from our current budget and put it into another program. When we have $250,000 right now that has not been transferred to the CRA and could be used towards a citywide program, and then if we need to come back later and look at things, we could do that as well.
Yeah, I mean, the budget can be amended. My concern is that, this that I've been given, I think the amount was 250,000, that was the amount, like a mirrored program for the city and the CRA, but the cut identified by Commissioner James don't toll to 250,000, so I don't know where to get the additional money from at this point, even if we were to, if this were.
Right. Well, and the other issue is if you're actually going to mirror the program, I think you're looking at 30% of the city for $250,000, and 70% of the city is the rest of the city. I mean, to truly mirror the program, wouldn't it have to be significantly more?
I don't know what the actual needs in the community are, but just on the basic numbers, the basic math would say that you probably would want to allocate more of a percentage to the area outside of the CRA because there are more residents in that area.
Okay. And I see the city manager has her hand up, but let me just, there's one other thing that, just for the education of people who are listening, the CRA is part of the city. It is not a separate entity, other than for certain programs and certain special interests, so to speak, there are different grants and things that you can get for the CRA that are catered towards the CRA. But the CRA is part of the city. So if we were to do a citywide program with the $250,000 that is still in the city budget, that did come from reserves for the purpose of doing these initiatives because we did have some money that we could use, then it would still be, you'd still have people from the CRA that could apply for this. It's not like the CRA would be excluded. Everybody throughout the city would be able to apply for it regardless of that. The other thing that I did want to mention, Commissioner James has indicated that no one's really put anything up and that she has supported anything that was put up for the city as a whole. I put up a job initiative, job training initiative at our last budget workshop where this was discussed, and initially asked for $60,000. After comments from everybody, I asked for 75,000 because it seemed to be something that everybody was in agreement about, and it was something that would be for the city as a whole, for everybody in the city, those in need of training or retraining into a new career that would not require a college degree but would require certifications, and had a very detailed plan laid out. And quite frankly, Commissioner James, you did fight me on the $15,000, and you asked me, why do you need another $15,000? You only wanted 60. And I explained that it was because we all agreed that it was a good program and something that needed to be done, and we needed to make sure that we have more opportunities for others. This is the same sort of thing, where this is a good idea. It's a good idea, $250,000 for rental assistance. I completely agree, but it needs to be citywide. Then if we find that the $250,000 isn't enough, and we need to go back, and we need to look at this because as the vice mayor's very astutely said, this is going to go on for a while, this is going to continue, there are people that are going to need this. So if that is the case, we could come back and see again, as I said, if there are certain items that we don't want to, that we don't use, and maybe we do have additional funding out there, we may be able to take something else and put it towards another program. But for now, to make, to keep, to not continue to divide everybody, because that is what is happening, when you want to do two separate programs, you are creating division. The way to do this is to do this citywide and then allocate to anybody who requires it. And like I said, if we need more money, then maybe we can come back and see if there's something else that we can do it, get it from. I see that the city manager has had her hand up for a long time, so I'm going to call on her first.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. What I want to bring to your attention is something that you should really celebrate. For the past two fiscal years, this team, this administration and the team working with all of you, we've been able to save $4 million by being very conservative in our expenditures, but yet delivering excellence in the services that we're providing the residents citywide. Additionally, we've been very aggressive to finally get the 1.2 million FEMA dollars to restore these monies to our budget. So when Frank and I and all the department directors started working in the budget in April, rather than to do the entire budget, once we got to the point that we saw that unlike many cities that are furloughing employees and many cities that are cutting, we're actually getting to invest, and it happened with a lot of sacrifice and a lot of cutting and a lot of assessing. So when we went to the budget workshops and Frank and I sat, and we found you those $500,000, it was for you to work together and decide how you wanted to apply that. You know, whether it was doing the citywide testing or the citywide bookbag giveaway or the citywide food distribution, what we do is for the entire city. So I just want to make sure that you all know that, having been an executive director of a CRA for five years, that I totally understand this. What's disappointing is division, when there doesn't need to be division, where you all should be celebrating the successes that have occurred in the city for the past two years. We will make whatever, we will make whatever sacrifice and cut wherever you tell us to cut and make things work based on your directive.
Thank you.
But I would, but I also, I forgot two more things I wanted to mention also. Other cities that do have a program similar to this do not, including the cities that have CRAs, did not just give a rental assistance program to their CRAs. They gave it to the entire city and gave the option to the entire city as well, regardless of whether they had a CRA or not. Hollendale, for example, that program is open to everybody in the city. It is not open just to the CRA. And the other misstatement that was made earlier about the fact that myself and Commissioner Harris did not want to, did not want to have a rental assistance program is just completely untrue. The only reason why I asked for a delay was because the city, the county was coming out, and if you go back and you can watch the meeting, you can hear it, the county had a program coming out through the CARES Act. We did not have the final information on it yet. We were right about to get to a point where CARES Act funding was going to be approved for allocation. And as I said several times, we had to argue about this for a long time unnecessarily. We had a plan that was going before the county commission, and we did not need to have any, anything that we did undermine that allocation, that plan, and that, what we were seeking from the county. We did not know at that point whether or not it would impact the CARES Act funding that we would be entitled to. And furthermore, without knowing what their plan was, without having the details of their plan and what was going to pass, we don't want to duplicate that. We may want to follow the same criteria, but we need to know what they're doing so that we are not going out there and perhaps not allowing our residents to receive as much as they could potentially get. And we didn't know how much money they were going to be allowing individual residents. We didn't have any information. If we had set up a program early on and said, let's put out a certain amount of money and limited the amount of money to how much they could get, and then the county did a separate program and said, you can't, you can't have any more money from us because you already got money from your city, we didn't know what was going to happen. And that's all I was asking for, was waiting for that to happen, and it was the next day that they voted on it. So it wasn't like it was a delay, and it certainly wasn't anybody saying that they didn't want such a program. It was a matter of making sure that we were doing it right. I have no problem with doing, and I said that at the last meeting, I have no problem with doing a rental assistance program, but I think it needs to be citywide, given the fact that that's the amount of money that is sitting there from the reserves that we have specifically for programs that we can do now. And as I said, get through this, and then if we still need more money to be allocated, then we can go back and take a look and see what else needs to be done, just like they did with stimulus, just like they've done with other things. But to just simply limit it and then ask the city to cut more money out of the budget, more money out of the budget, in order to ensure that it doesn't come out of reserves is terrible. You're asking the whole city to pay for something that could be done now through money that's already been set aside, and then come back and revisit it later. Commissioner James?
Thank you. That's what these budget discussions and workshops and meetings are about, to allocate the funding, and so I don't think it's terrible. I also don't think it's terrible because I'm not cutting any programs that our city manager or her staff has worked on. Again, the PAL is not something that is, that can't be cut out of the budget. The Vintage Motorcycle Show isn't something that the city staff worked tirelessly on. Holiday Lights, I don't even know if we have the RFP for that, but it went from $8,500 to $100,000. So we haven't started that, and then the, what is it, the commission admin coordinator is not something that we're all paying desperately for. So to say that we're cutting out programs. So to say that we're cutting out programming, I want to be very clear that I'm not asking to cut out important programming that are going to affect our residents. That's number one. Number two, I will address that during that meeting, I did, I did support the unplanned, or there was no plan laid out for the item that the Mayor is speaking about that she brought to the budget. I did support that. I did question why, when it was time to vote, you needed additional funding. I did have questions, just because you have questions, and that's, that's my, that's my business. That's, if I have questions as an elected official, I'm going to ask those questions. But I do think it's a great program, and I do, and and I do accept the program at whatever funding that you requested it to be, because it is a great program. To address the comment that our Finance Director stated, my, I know you said that it didn't equal up, but I was speaking on, where is my paper? I was speaking on the funding that from the 600 and whatever funding that we found from that email I sent to you. Let me go to my text message. From the 670, $900,000, 670,900 adjustment from the general fund, if you took away the $500,000 from that, which, I I I'm recalling what you said, saying that around the time that me and you had that conversation was around the time that you and the City Manager had a conversation from the 500, but I'm hearing the City Manager say that she had this conversation all the way back in April, so whatever, the dates and times, it is what it is, but that's where I'm getting this number from. I'm I'm getting the 670.9 thousand dollars, and then I I was taking out the money from that. That's where I received the allocation. I do know that that was for a specific use. There were also other things on that that was not just for the funding of, you know, the 25% match that we already approved. So again, it was not additional funding from the reserve. I would not ask for additional funding of the reserve. I do also understand that with all of this still, that our Finance Director said that we will be around the the point that we want it to be with our reserves. I do wish that we could not be divisive. I do understand that there are stipulations that separate the city from the CRA. We all are still one, because I'm a product of that. And so I am sitting here to tell you that we all are still one, and I do want to find a solution. I don't want to go back and forth. I put my solution on the table. My solution is that so we can have a program for the city and the CRA that everyone could be happy, that we serve the people and the interest and the concerns of our residents, and that we just move forward, because I don't, I don't want to go back and forth. I don't want to show up to commission meetings to argue and be contentious and be divisive. I came here with a solution. I didn't come here, I came here with a solution. I came here to take, and the fact that, you know, the City Manager has been good in in in, you know, when I came to her last year, we were able to do that in 15 minutes. So if we were able to do that in 15 minutes with Nikki, I I have confidence in in Frank that we will be able to do that, because I'm not taking away funding from public services. I'm not taking away funding from our parks program. I'm not taking away funding from, you know, those major, you know, our beach fund or any other, you know, initiatives that we we have and we have done. I'm taking away stuff that I feel like can wait. These are things that I feel like, you know, are not going to affect the safety and and the ability, the ability for our for our citizens and our residents to to be able to live in a manner. So again, I have my motion on on the table, and I'll wait for the rest of the discussion. Thank you.
Commissioner Harris.
The, you know, as I said last week, the program should be citywide, because the needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few. And to Commissioner James, the additional money for the holiday lighting was because of people out west. They wanted some inclusion in that. And I still think that we don't know what the program is going to be as far as rental assistance, and we have, we haven't even talked about the clear-cut criteria for the dispersing of those dollars and who gets what from who. So until we can have a workshop and iron out all these details about the dispensing of the money for the rental assistance for the entire city, I think we should consider that first before we make any decisions on any dispensing any kind of dollars, even if it's $1. Who, what's the criteria? Does anybody know what the criteria is for rental assistance? Does anybody know?
It's the same criteria of the $85,000 that you requested for an assessment that you didn't even have a number for, Commissioner Harris.
Well, you know what? You don't need to tell me what I do, and we're talking about rental assistance now. We're not talking about traffic assessment. Traffic is something that affects everybody. Do you understand that?
I I don't know who you're talking to. You can go home and talk to your spouse that way. Please refrain from talking to me like that.
Well, you don't need to tell me who to go home and talk to, because traffic affects everybody, and that's why we agreed to do the assessment. And we're going to get plenty of help from the Broward MPO, but you don't know about that, because you've never been to Broward, one Broward MPO meeting, that I know. So we need criteria for the rental assistance, whether Chickie needs it, or Lauren needs it, or Frank needs it, or Adam needs it. What's the criteria, and we need to come up with that, before we do anything else? So let's, let's, let's do it.
Um, Frank, where's Frank?
Was he asked a question?
Was Frank asked a question?
Yeah, did I miss something? Was Frank asked a question?
I'm not being franked a question.
Oh, I didn't, I can't hear, there's something wrong with this thing.
Okay. Frank, do you have anything else that you'd like to add to this discussion after hearing you?
Yeah, see?
Well, so I do, because I need to respond to what was mentioned about the budget request. And now, in addition to what's what's already been appropriated, it looks like there's a, to add additional appropriation, which the the discussion I had today with Commissioner James was that the budget where it is right now is back, and and lands us at the $20 million fund balance mark at the end of next year, which was the City Manager's plan all along. So you're asking for the additional 100 and semi that we took out of the budget when we eliminated that FEMA funding item. That money is out of the budget. So what you provided me was a list of 139 dollars in potential savings through cutting certain items, so the additional 111,000 would have to come from that reserves, that's more money that we're taking out of reserves, that's not currently in the budget.
Can I, can I ask a question, because I'm confused?
The Vice Mayor has her hand up as well. I had her hand up.
Oh, okay. I I wanted to ask them about that.
Go ahead.
While he's talking. Okay, thank you. Um, Frank, how much money was allocated for the 25% match?
It was approximately 660 dollars.
Okay, well, we decided, because when I spoken to you, those funds were not dispersed at the time when I had my meeting on, I think it was August the 14th or something like that. They weren't dispersed at that time. We hadn't even discussed it out of the Commission or anything. I I didn't have that conversation with you, though. So what happened to the debt, debt funding?
That, so that was money appropriated from fund balance, and that appropriation was removed from the budget because it's not needed anymore. So you, the the board, the Commission met last week in the workshop and reappropriated an additional $500,000 towards different initiatives, plus the additional $60,000 reserve for the CRA. So it's more than just the 500,000. There was an additional 60,000 there.
Right, but the 500, you're saying 500, but I'm asking about that 660,000. What happened to that?
It, it was removed from the budget, so therefore it it wouldn't be used from fund balance unless you add in other initiatives. So, so the point is.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, I didn't mean, I don't want to cut you off.
The point is, if you want to reappropriate that money, it needs to be reappropriated. It's not in the budget right now. So the budget that is attached to your agenda item that we are, hopefully noticed tomorrow in the sunset, that doesn't contain that extra 111,000 appropriation that we would need in order to get this, to have this additional 2 program. So that would need to be amended to add another 111,000 into the budget.
Right, so, okay, so I I understand, I think I understand what you're saying now, but my my point initially, and my point continues to be, we had those monies from the 25% match that we no longer needed, and you did not go and disclose that we can just use it for wherever we want to use it from, making sure I say that. But those those monies were already allocated to something. And then after we had a workshop, you only put 500,000 into the budget instead of the entire 600, because we only discussed the 500, correct? Or the 560, I apologize, correct?
We we only put back in what was approved by the City Commission in the workshops.
Okay, okay, so it still makes sense to me then. I'm still, I'm still clear that we had 600 odd dollars or whatever the funding that I that I spoke about earlier that went towards a match, and I want to reallocate that funding, which which would, what you're saying, would mean that we would have to amend the budget to include that additional funding that was going to go towards the 25% match, correct?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'm clear on my my motion. Thank you.
Um, one more comment. Vice Mayor, you had an initiative that you presented for $100,000. Would you be willing to cut that and see if we could use it with from Art in Public Places money? I can't hear you.
Sorry, Mayor, to fund this initiative?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, and City Manager, can we do that?
Well, what I was going to present in in the City Managers' report, but I can actually present it now, is we've already received our first allocation from Art in Public Places, 22,000 and change. We have a projection with the next 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 projects that are coming forward that will give us a total of 563,000. So if if the Vice Mayor okay's it, we could shift some of that money to the art in in public places. The only reason why she hadn't done so, that this was really labeled an environmental, it does have an art component, but it it can be done because what what she proposed actually cast a wide net on all the benefits of this. But it can be used for art in public places.
Okay, so look, let let me make everyone's life a little bit easier and everyone's blood pressure go down. Take the money from my project. The money from my project will come. It will come from the Art in Public Places, and it'll be there when it will be there. I I again, I I feel there's a large part of this that is a philosophical debate, but the logical minds of this Commission are not going to solve that tonight. So there are all of us who want to help Dania Beach. There are some of us that want to do it one way. There are some others of us that want to do it a different way. Neither group is bad, but they just have a different way of seeing it. So let's be the bridge right now, City Manager, you and I. Take, figure out what the the money is, that's fine, and then at, that they need to do the the, for the city, so we can do this project for the for the city, so they can do the rental assistance. I don't know if we need to workshop it to have what the criteria is, but obviously, as we've said numerous times, it needs to be tied to COVID, and we'll be done with it. And when the money comes for the Art in Public Places, I will request it then. So I I don't know if we will need a new motion for that, but I I would really like to move this forward.
I have a question as well before we go to the next, to to creating a new motion, if that's what's going to happen here. City Manager, how much is the position, the admin position in full for the year?
Frank, can you chime in how much it is for the position in full? Because one of the things that I was recommending, just to be safe, now that that the Vice Mayor has agreed, look, we're all sharing Chris. Candido and I do a lot of the things on our own. You all do a lot on your own. I would recommend that we wait one more year, and because it's, you guys are agreeing to this, we're agreeing to this, and at the end of the day, everybody wins. So if we take the $100,000 that we had appropriated, plus the 25,000 from the lights, plus the 30K that Commissioner James had mentioned, Frank, how much would it be the position based on half a year? How do we get to 250 and call it a day so we can move on and it's a win-win?
If if you want to identify the things that you know you want to cut, specific programs, so 1,000 for the for the Thousand Mermaids, 25,000 for Holiday Lights, and then what else was there for, that you would definitely be okay with?
30K with a PAL defer for one year.
Okay.
And I believe Commissioner said, Commissioner James said they're reserves. I don't, I don't know the exact amount.
No, I didn't say the reserves. I said the monies that were from the match that you all put back there, but I didn't, the money that was for the match, for the FEMA match, that's what I was talking about. And the the admin, I think it was 90,000, but to do it, around 90,000, but to do it, oh, God, at half the midpoint would be, around what, how much, Frank?
It was, I think the position is 3,000 for the year, total cost, including benefits.
Broke up. How much?
You said 90,000.
93,000.
93,000? So starting at mid-year would be how much? Why don't we just get rid of it altogether, and then that's 93,000?
Mm-hmm. Okay, but I'm asking Frank, so how much would it be for mid-year?
46,500.
46,000. If we do it the way that I suggested, how much does it put us at a deficit? That's what I want to know, not about us having an admin or not.
Okay, so with the 100,000 for the, the art project, plus the 25 Holiday Lights, 30 PAL, and then 46 and a half for the administrative position, that's.
We, we didn't, I put the Vintage Motorcycle Show on there as well. I didn't do that.
That's true, that's true.
Okay. So that was 25,000?
Oh, 25,000 for the motorcycle, so I had 19, okay.
Me too.
Okay.
Okay, I apologize, I I picked up a different number, so 19.
Oh.
Which is it?
It's 19.
I'm going to have to double check, because I don't have the number in front of me, and I don't want to have the wrong number. So give me one moment.
Okay, Frank.
I I think I sent you that screenshot, Frank, of the email that we discussed. No, I didn't send you the screenshot.
I just want to verify, though, because that one.
Okay.
I don't, I don't recall that one for sure, because, and the other ones I know, but that one I'm not.
No problem.
It's 19,500.
Right, you're right.
Okay, where is that footage?
What's the total?
Okay. 221,000.
Yeah.
Okay, so then, okay, you can eliminate then. I just wanted to see what the numbers were before we eliminated the, that position, the admin position full-time.
Yeah, 221.
Before the next budget, and then.
So just.
Wait, did you, did you add, did you add the contingency, Frank?
No, I was without using contingency. So so what I, so you, just to keep it simple, so we don't have to adjust the total budget, so you can eliminate the position and all that creates a little bit more savings, and then just put that towards City Commission contingency, or you can do the position for half the year and take the rest from contingency. Recommend just having a little, eliminating the whole position and all the other things, and then you'll have an extra few thousand dollars that will put that towards City Commission contingency.
I'm okay with that, Frank. Thank you.
So that comes out to what total?
It's actually, it's a total of 267,500, so it's an additional 17,500 that would just get added to City contingency.
And that would be for a rental assistance program for the other 70% of the city?
For 50,000 towards that program.
Okay, so it still technically does not mirror it if you're going to do a mirror, a program that mirrors it. It is less money actually going to 70% of the city. I I'm sure that the votes are going to be there, so I'm just going to cut bait at this point and let it go, but just know that I am not in support of that. If you're going to do a true program that mirrors the the CRA, then it needs to truly mirror it, and this does not.
I I, wait.
I want to mirror the policy.
Mayor, Mayor, what, what, I I I misunderstood, I don't understand what your, your last.
My, my issue.
What, what are you?
My, my issue is this, you're talking about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for thirty percent of the, of the population, and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for seventy percent of the population, there's a difference there. That means there's less money going to the larger percentage of people, that's all. So it again, creates division, it is, is enforcing the division that's already in existence, and it's going to make people resent. So, and I really don't want to do that, I'm trying to bring people together, I've been trying to do that since day one, but I keep getting fights about it all the time. So, and it's, it's, this is, this is a, it's, it's just an ongoing issue. But I'm willing to just let it go at this point and move on, because we need to move on, there are other things to address, and we still have to go back to the CRA meeting, because we still apparently need to address all those things tonight, because we're in such a big hurry.
Well, respectfully, Mayor, I mean, but look at what, what we're doing, I, you know, isn't that the side of the successful compromise, neither side is, is happy. I, I'm not happy, I don't have my grief, I'm sad.
And Vice Mayor, I am trying to do that, but the problem is, she's talking about mirroring the, 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 the program, it does not.
I think she means the policy, but fine, we, we, you're right.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
She didn't use the word, then mirroring. But we've created something, but we've created something for, for the city, and that we've created something for the CRA. So do we want to, do we need to have a motion, a different motion for that?
I don't have a motion.
Okay, also, I get that motion.
My motion is to mirror, let me, let me be very clear with my motion. It's to mirror the requirement, it's to re, mirror the, the policy, not necessarily the funding, but to have the same program, um, you know, it was, it was the big thing with, with, that everybody needed this, everybody needed this. So, I brought forth a program that would mirror the same requirements, um, the same type of policy that we're going to have in the CRA. I felt like it was a solution, because if the priority was that, people are suffering everywhere. We have vulnerable people everywhere, even though there is more poverty, there's more underlying poor economic conditions, there are more frontline workers in the CRA, although, you know, that smaller population has a lot of more problems. That's why it was identified to be a CRA designated area. So my motion, to be clear, is to, um, amend the budget, as Frank stated it, with all those stipulations that I, I'm not going to repeat, but to have it to where it is a mirror program dealing with the policy and the requirements, not necessarily the funding. And that is my motion.
I'm going to ask that we make sure that once this passes, that we have a workshop that includes not just the CRA, not just the CRA Executive Director, but also the City Manager, Director of Finance, people from all areas, because it impacts everybody and everybody needs to be a part of determining what the criteria are.
I am supportive of, of having everybody at the table, not a problem for me.
I second the motion. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Brandemart?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
I would say yes, as long as we can establish the criteria for all, bring everybody to the table, and even perhaps somebody from the county as well, yes.
Commissioner James?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Oddman?
Yeah.
Mayor Llewellyn?
I'm gonna say no, primarily because it does not truly mirror the, the program.
Motion carries four to one.
Next item?
Six and seven are related, so I'll read them together, although they will be, have to be voted separately. They are called quasi-judicial hearings, as we're all familiar with, that anybody on the commission who's been contacted by the applicant, I spoke to the applicant's lawyer today, he said he had spoken to several of you, so if you'll disclose that after I read the titles. First one is, item six, resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach Florida approving the site plan for the construction of a one hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred and forty-one square foot industrial warehouse building in the IG Industrial Zoning District, SPO three-nine dash two-oh, submitted by US Crane and Rigging LLC. On behalf of the property owner Pamela K. Hayes, as trustee of the Robert L. Elmore July twen, July two thousand and ten revocable trust, revocable trust, that should be, for property located at twenty-nine eighty West State Road eighty-four in City Dania Beach Florida, running for conflicts, providing for an effective date. Companion resolution nine-seven, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach Florida approving the twenty-nine eighty West State Road eighty-four plat, PL oh-four-one-twenty, submitted by US Crane and Rigging LLC, on behalf of the property owner Pamela K. Hayes, as trustee of the Robert L. Elmore July twenty revocable trust, for property located at twenty-nine eighty West State Road eighty-four in City Dania Beach Florida, running for conflicts, providing for an effective date. The commissioners, if you've been contacted by the applicant, or, or against by anybody, if you please, just so indicate.
Uh, City Attorney, was this Dennis Mealy's project?
Yes.
Yes.
I have.
Yes, I have.
Anybody, and, and the opponents, I don't think there's anybody in opposition to these.
No.
Okay, so, uh, then we're gonna have to swear in whoever's going to speak, other than the lawyer, who is appearing for the applicant.
I know Eric Metz is here.
Okay, Mr. Metz, and anybody else? Other than Dennis.
You don't, you don't dispute so.
Corinne.
All right, so Corinne and Mr. Metz, you swear a firm testimony, you will be giving, will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much, please proceed, Corinne.
Good evening, Commissioners, um, Corinne LaJoy, Assistant Director of Community Development. Um, I am going to present both the plat and the site plan together, because they are both for the same property. Um, and I have a presentation, if we can get that up as well. The property itself is located south of State Road eighty-four and five ninety-five, and west of southwest thirtieth Avenue. It is actually, thank you, um, it's actually partly located in the city of Fort Lauderdale and in the city of Dania Beach, so they are, um, what we're approving is the parcel located in Dania Beach. Um, if we can go to the next slide, that, um, is the slide that discusses the plat, and the applicant is asking to establish a plat note allowing one hundred and fifty-four thousand square feet of industrial use, one hundred and seventy-four dry slips on parcel A and B, and one hundred and fifty-four thousand square feet of industrial on parcel C. Parcel C is the parcel that's located in the city of Dania Beach, and that's the site plan that we'll discuss in a moment. Next slide. Um, the site plan itself consists of a two thousand, um, a little bit more than a two thousand square foot office space, and one hundred and fifteen thousand five hundred square feet of storage space. The use of the site will include light industrial, outdoor crane storage, vehicle fleet parking, which is considered an accessory use. At staff's request, the applicant has reached out to and is working with adjacent property owners, businesses, and Port Ninety-five Commerce Park Association. This is particularly important, because the access points, um, are through, um, across access agreements on other properties, so the applicant is already working with those, um, adjacent property owners for those reasons as well. The next slide, um, shows the site plan itself, and that, this is the parcel C located in Dania Beach, um, and this is the, um, where steel fabrication will be occurring on the site. The next slide shows the building elevation, the drawings of the elevation, and the following slides are renderings of what that building would look like once it is constructed. So we can go to the next slide and show those renderings with the landscaping. So this is, um, the proposed building that they're proposing in Dania Beach. I'm sorry, the next slide. Um, this item did go through the Development Review Committee. Um, the plat, as well as the site plan, was before the Development Review Committee, uh, two, on two different occasions. There are some outstanding site plan comments that remain, that will remain as conditions of approval if the resolution is approved, that the applicant must address prior to the issuance of a building permit. Um, next slide. And with that, staffs recommending approval of the plat resolution, and approval of the resolution for the site plan with the outstanding DRC comments as conditions of approval prior to the issuance of the permit. And I know the applicant is here, both the attorney and Eric, representing the development group, are both here. Um, I think they also have a presentation to make to the City Commission, and they can answer any questions the commission may have. Are there any questions of staff at this time? Thank you.
So hands up. Um, this is a public meeting, is there anyone here to speak for or against? Move the item. Do we have a second?
Yeah, for nine, nine-six is the site plan first, please.
Okay, so for nine-six, do we have a second?
Yes, second.
Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Brandemart? That was yes, Commissioner Brandemart?
I'm muted. Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Oddman?
Oh, she, oh, there she is. She seems to be off the camera.
Okay, um, okay, absent, Mayor Llewellyn?
Yes.
Motion carries four one, four zero, I'm sorry.
And the second item, you have a motion for the second item for, uh, nine point seven.
What?
Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Brandemart?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yeah.
No, Vice Mayor Oddman, I don't see her, uh, Mayor Llewellyn?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Nine-eight is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach Florida approving the site plan in special exception, SPO four-two-dash-twenty slash SE oh-four-eight-dash-twenty for the construction of a fourteen thousand square foot specialty school in variances, VA oh-four-three-dash-twenty, EA oh-four-four-dash-twenty, VA oh, oh-four-five-dash-twenty, EA oh-four-six-dash-twenty, EA oh-four-seven-dash-twenty, and VA oh-six-three-twenty. Parking spaces, building placement, landscaping, dumpster location, perimeter wall and height, submitted by Salz-Michelson Architects on behalf of AMOPT LLC, for the property located at ninety-two South Federal Highway in the City of Dania Beach Florida, as legally describing exhibit A, a copy which is attached to this resolution, running for conflicts, providing for an effective date. Anybody's been contacted either for or against in this application, if you'd please disclose that. None? And, uh, who's going to speak on behalf of AMO, other than the attorney? If anybody.
Mary Farlander? Has her hand up?
Who, who's that, I'm sorry?
Mary Farlander has her hand up.
Okay, all right, so Corinne and Mary.
Yeah.
Mary, you swear a firm testimony, you'll be giving, if called upon, will be the truth, or the truth, or nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Corinne.
Thank you. Um, this item does have a site plan special exception and several variances associated with it, and I do have a presentation for this as well. Um, the project is, um, associated with the AMO campus. It's, the property is located on the South Federal Highway Mixed Use Zoning District in the Regional Activity Center. Um, the property itself, thank you, is located on the southeast corner of Southwest Second Avenue and Dixie Highway, which is south of the existing AMO campus. The property is currently vacant, and the applicant has submitted a plat that was previously reviewed by DRC and approved by the commission in July. Um, the next slide talks about the site plan, um, and then the applicant is proposing to develop the site by constructing a specialty school training facility as an extension of the existing AMO building and campus adjacent to the site to the north. The development site is the western parcel of a larger vacant lot, so, uh, what's being developed today will not touch Federal Highway, that eastern portion is being, um, held vacant for future development. The property currently pays, uh, property taxes and will remain doing so. The applicant has agreed to enter into a payment in lieu of taxes, should this change in the future. Uh, the next slide talks about the special exception request for the specialty school, and specialty schools are permitted in a South Federal Highway Mixed Use Zoning District as a special exception when it's not located on Dania Beach Boulevard or South Federal Highway, and since this property doesn't front on South Federal Highway, the special exception is necessary. Um, the applicant has identified how the request is consistent with the special exception criteria, which is provided in your backup. The next slide talks about the variances that are being requested, there are several of them. Um, they're to provide, now, on-street parking, um, to provide a ten-foot perimeter fence or wall where a maximum four is allowed, to provide twenty off-street parking spaces where forty-five are required. Um, the placement of the building, they're asking for a greater setback than the code, because it's a form-based code, um, identifies. They're asking for a change in the, um, street tree species, because there's power lines that interfere, would interfere with the height that the sable palms achieve, and they're asking to provide the dumpster on the adjacent site instead of on the, 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 um, development site. Uh, the applicant has identified how each of these requests are consistent with the variance criteria, and that's provided in your backup information as well. Um, the next slide shows the site plan and gives you the orientation of that, the property with the building and, um, onsite parking. Um, this is associated, as I said, with the AMO campus, so a lot of the people visiting the site will be pedestrians walking across the street, which is one of the reasons why, uh, one of the justifications for the parking reduction that the applicant has made. The next two slides, um, show the drawing of the building. If we can go to the next slide, and then the next slide is the rendering of what that building would look like when it's completed. Um, the next slide, the project did go before the Development Review Committee, um, two times, in June and July. There are some outstanding DRC comments that remain and must be addressed prior to the issuance of the building permit. Um, and staff recommendation is, um, approval of the site plan special exception and variance resolution with the outstanding DRC comments made as conditions of approval. And the applicant, Hope Calhoun, is the attorney for the applicant, is present, as well as, um, Mary, who is with the architectural firm, but I'm available if you have any questions on this.
Okay, any questions? Uh, this is a public hearing, is there anyone here to speak for or against?
I make the motion to approve, if there's no discussion.
I second it.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Brandemart?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Oddman?
Yeah.
Mayor Llewellyn?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
We have.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have nothing under discussion and possible action, but you have commission comments, Commissioner Brandemart?
No, I don't have any, thank you.
Commissioner Harris?
Um, I just wanted to mention that, uh, about the traffic assessment plan, because traffic affects everybody, is that we're working on a plan, and then we'll loop in the MPO to see what they can do with the C-Slip program to ease our traffic congestion problems. Although they're not as bad as they have been in the past, there's still the issue with traffic calming, which everybody has talked about before. That's it. That's it for tonight, thank you everybody for being so understanding and so patient.
Commissioner James?
Um, my only comment, I, I don't have any comments, matter of fact, I'll, I'll pass on my comments for tonight, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Nothing tonight, thank you, Mayor.
Just have two things I want to bring up. One is, um, I, I did put a post out about this, but I want to make sure people hear it. Uh, only fifty-four percent of the people in Dania Beach have responded to the census, so we're running out of time. It is really important that everybody complete the census, whether you do it online or you do it when somebody comes to your door. Um, we rely on, on an accurate census, so that we can actually get money from the government, the federal government, to pay for various programs, so, um, not something to be afraid of. So, um, not something to be afraid of. It's something that's really, really important. And we really need, uh, for, um, for everybody to complete it and take the time. It only takes a couple of minutes. It doesn't take very long. And it's, it's just very, very important to be counted, so we make sure that we're, that Dana Beach is getting its fair share of the funding that's out there. Um, the other thing that I want to mention is, and this kind of goes along with the census because of the fact that, um, we, we need to get things promoted out there. I'd like to ask the city manager if there is through social media, um, a way that we could also do some voter education. Um, I want to make sure that people know things like where they're, where they can vote, how they can vote, um, things like that, because that's also something that's important that needs to be put out there. Um, we've done a good job in the past of promoting things via social media. Um, I'd like to see us do that again with this, um, and, and see if that's an initiative that we could move forward on. I can't hear you, Anna. You're muted.
Mute me?
There you are. You're unmuted.
Can you? Kathy's been doing a fantastic job, and we've been really augmenting, you know, what we're putting and our far reach out there. Um, so I have no problem putting information out there, um, be it the census, being, you know, voting information. So, certainly.
Okay, that's all I have. Um, appointments? Anybody?
I have none, Mayor.
Can we, um, uh, city clerk, or I don't know if it's city clerk or who it is. Can we take off the Complete Count Advisory Committee since the census is basically almost finished at this point? Is that the city clerk?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mayor. Yes, absolutely. That's a very good idea, I think.
Okay, so why don't we sunset that one and remove it? Is anybody, uh, do I get a motion for that?
No, not at all.
Okay. Okay, um, administrative report, city manager.
Yes, thank you. Um, I wanted to let everybody know that we've extended our peer hours to 11:00 PM. So I wanted to thank all of you for bringing to our attention what the residents are communicating to you. Um, additionally, um, speaking with our director of Parks and Recreation, um, commencing today, um, we're extending our park hours. So our park hours now are 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and then 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. That's in all our parks. Uh, additionally, um, Broward County School Board has an initiative for snacks that they give out to the kids on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So we're going to be doing the snacks on Mondays and Wednesday at all our city parks. And I wanted to thank our Parks and Rec Director, um, for always thinking of initiatives that, um, we can put out there, uh, for our community. Uh, second, I wanted to discuss with you briefly how excited we are. Eleanor, our Director of Community Development, has informed us, um, that we have several projects moving forward. The 350 warehouse project will be bringing in $58,375.79 um, for art and public places. Uh, the Outboard Dynamic Building 1, 2, and 3 will bring forward, uh, $9,759. Um, Sea View Apartments will bring forward $200,000. Uh, Dana Apartments will bring forward $250,000. And Avid Hotel, uh, number two, will bring forward $45,688. And I wanted to thank you all because we were able to pass this in December unanimously. And now we're looking at in excess of $500,000 that we're going to be able to bring forward, to bring culture in our citywide. So I wanted to inform you of that. Uh, the latest update that I wanted to give you, um, is we have installed, um, the majority of the, um, impact resistant, or actually, um, let me, let me, let me slow it up a little bit. We have installed the majority of the things that you have approved regarding to COVID and mitigation of the COVID spread. Um, what's going to be happening within the next couple of weeks, because it's already being done and it's specific to our city, is the bulletproof, um, I know a lot of you were very much looking forward to this, the bulletproof installation, um, we will be ending within the month or so to be able to do the, the partitions. Um, we're pretty much done in all the different departments for, for the partitions that we're doing citywide, and, um, also the temperature check and cameras. Um, one more thing, I wanted to thank our Public Works Director. I know some of you have discussed several areas of the city, um, that really need spusing up. We've been working on Northwest First Street, all the city entrances, um, augmented all the city signage with landscaping, and we should be done by, um, mid-October. So anyway, I thank you for all your communication, and we look forward, um, to the next couple of, of weeks and really completing all these projects that are out there pending.
Commissioner James?
A report.
Yes, um, and I have a question. When, your best guess, and it doesn't have to be a specific date or time, but when do you foresee us being able to come back into the chamber? I mean, I know we all met, met a few times at IC Parkers, so we're in person, also. But I, I'm hearing you say like some of the partitions are going to take months. These are a month or so. I, I don't, what is the timeline for us getting back? If, if just for, especially just for our meetings, maybe, uh, the phases are of that.
Actually, when I communicated with, um, with Linda today, the only thing that's going to take a little bit longer is the bulletproof, um, the fabrication, because it's a custom fit. Um, so that's the only thing that's going to take a little longer commission. Now, we could move forward and have the meetings without the bulletproof. Um, we can move a whole lot quicker with a partition, but the folks from the bulletproof wanted to install the bulletproof, um, before we did the partitions. Um, we're ready to go in the rest of the city, but the bulletproof is taking a little longer because it's, it's custom-made. Uh, but it's being fabricated as we speak, and, um, I'll see if we can expedite it. But you should be able to be holding commission meetings, um, by next month.
By next month? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, ask something about that with the bulletproof? Um, I, I, I'm assuming that we've already put money into this?
We have issued a PO for the bulletproof, yes.
Because I, I'm still not quite understanding why we really need bulletproof glass when we haven't. I mean, all of our parking spaces are labeled. I mean, if somebody really wants to get you, they're gonna get you. So I don't really see the point. But if it's already too late, then it's already too late, so.
I, I wanted to also let you know that we have installed the metal detector. So the metal detector, um, is, is ready to go. The only thing that's taking a little longer, my, our apologies, um, is, is a bulletproof. And I'll let you know as soon, as soon as it gets installed.
Okay.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
City attorney?
Nothing, you had.
City clerk?
Upcoming meetings, excuse me, Thursday, September 24th at 7:00 PM is your regular City Commission meeting. Tuesday, October 13th at 5:30 is CRA board meeting, followed by a City Commission meeting at 7:00 PM. That's all.
Okay, um, for those who are, who joined us late, we are going to end this meeting and go back and complete the CRA meeting, which we ran over on. Vice Mayor, did you have something?
Well, yeah, I just want to make sure, are we gonna, because if we hang up, usually we need a new code. So.
Frank?
Can we just take a two-minute?
On this one thing?
Do we have to leave and just take a short recess?
I, I would like.
That's what I'm saying.
Frank?
I'm just afraid if we log off, how do we get back on?
I'm waiting for him to hold on, so that he can speak to us and tell us.
Okay.
Frank?
Frank, are you there? Or Monica, maybe?
He had his hand.
And we can always, um, just.
We're trying to use, um, the code from CRA, but we are going to let you know as soon as we can.
Monica, remember to take me out of the visual.
Yes.
So we're going to log off then and come back out on the CRA code. Do, do we have to for legal purposes, Monica, or can we just stay?
Continue.
Oh, Frank's here.
Frank, I'm mute. I, I can't hear you, Frank. I'm mute, Frank.
Sorry about that. I, I relinquish my hosting duties because I was gonna try and go to the CRA board meeting and, and get it started. I think it'd be easier if we just continue from here. We'll.
Right.
The record, and then we'll start a new recording for the CRA board meeting, and we'll splice it back with the first half of the meeting. But it'd just be easier if everybody just stays here on this one.
All right.
Frank, can you take me out to visual?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, can we, Mayor, would it be okay if we, if we took five minutes?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna ask that we come back at 9:00 PM. That's seven minutes.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
Frank, with that words, or? Yes, I know.
Hi. This is warmer in here now. It's freezing. I know.